We are expecting at least two more planning commission members. So I'm gonna take some time and give them a shot. Because we were expecting.
So I've started the recording.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. It's three thirty-five and we're convening a meeting of the planning commission to further discuss a project that we are diving into, both from the perspective of state regulation and our own desire to make sure that our town plan is effective, not outdated, and is responding to current new needs within the community. And so we are embarking on this process. We anticipate that it could be a two or three-year process, given the time that we've already spent on it. The town has engaged the Bennington Regional Commission to provide expertise and support in undertaking this very extensive look at our town plan. It has been updated and revised on a periodic basis. Again, that's a compliance with state statute. But I think we have accepted the reality that this town plan update is critical to the future of the community, given, as I mentioned before, the needs and challenges to communities and that the state, the whole, and everywhere as a whole, is facing in these times of economics and housing and other services that are outlined in our town plan, which gives us the opportunity to look forward regarding the future of that. And so we're here today to discuss with the regional commission a draft process to embark on this endeavor. And they are gonna provide us with an overview of that. That plan has been compiled from meetings in conjunction with the planning commission. We have given input. They have provided us their expertise to date. And today, we are going to see how that shapes out into a plan to move forward over these next one to two years, I suppose. And so I would like to turn the meeting, first of all, I'd like to ask the planning commission to introduce themselves. Eddie Duskin? Dennis Warren?
Bridget Allen.
And I am Michael McCallum, Chair of the Commission. I would ask everyone in the room, starting with BCRC, to introduce themselves well.
I'm Janet Hurley from the BCRC, and I'm here with Samantha Page, Callie Gishberg, and sitting in today is also our Director Bill Cole.
And others, if you care to identify yourselves, we'd be happy to hear your names. Mike Wright-Benner?
Ed Varro?
Yes. Thank you. And anyone from the table?
Janice, you have a better one, John, can you do the input?
Yes. Well, thank you all. So Janet, we'll turn it over to you and whomever else to take this through the proposed plan. I said, stop using the proposed plan, because I don't want anybody to think that I'm talking about the town plan, the proposed methodology to get us to that town plan. And before you start, Nick, could you introduce yourself?
Nick Glassblatt, Member of the Commission, and I apologize for the ladies.
Janet, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Michael. So as Michael said, this is a, you know, a process that may be two to three years ago. Your plan is due to expire in, is it two and a half years from now?
January twenty-sixth.
January twenty-sixth. So, you know, this is the beginning stages of the process to renew that before that date. And this is phase one. And the town received a municipal planning grant to help you with this phase one. And it's basically a public engagement phase. So a phase in which we are going to reach out to as many people in the community as we can to try to get an understanding of what people love about Benton and what people wanna see happen in Benton in coming years. And so this engagement plan is the draft engagement plan that we're presenting to the planning commission tonight. And hopefully, it lifted a little bit of discussion, but then give us the go-ahead to move forward with engaging the community to try to get as much information as we can to set the stage for this town plan. And I'm gonna turn it over to Samantha.
Janet, just excuse me, before you go on, I think it's supposed to be if you're not sure, that what are the next steps after the engagement plans? And what are we trying to get to?
Okay. So the engagement plan is like a data gathering plan, a stage. And I worked with Dan to submit a new planning grant application last week for phase two. And phase two would take the information from this phase one engagement effort along with, you know, demographic data, housing data, and other, you know, data that we need to gather at a phase of the plan. And that would be funded by a second planning grant, hopefully, if we're successful in gaining that funding for the second phase. But this phase one effort, as Sam and Callie will tell you, will take us through the next several months of engaging the public to get as much information as we can from the community itself as to what they would like to see in Benton in coming years.
Okay. Hi, my name is Samantha Page, and this is my colleague, Callie Gishberg. And we're going to talk through the proposed engagement plan, which, as Janet said, will take us through the next couple of months of community outreach in Benton. Just to note that this meeting is being recorded. And so we're appreciative to everyone who's here today and who's watching remotely, but that this presentation will be available on the town's website. And there will also be an opportunity to comment and write in form on the town's website. So we are open to, Karen never has any thought on this, and Karen, I didn't hear. Sorry, one more thing I should, I should have said. There is this sign sheet, and if you want to be apprised, you wanna be notified of, you know, various meetings that are going to be happening, or tabling events that are going to be happening. If you leave your name and either a phone number or email address, we can be sure to contact you. We have some handouts on that people involved in our communication. So feel free to grab, grab anything. So just to start sort of the what, why, and how of this conversation. As Janet described, we're here to understand what the community of Benton takes, that Benton's strengths and challenges are, and to understand what people want to see in Benton's future. And so before we even get to a town plan update, we need to hear from the people in Benton on everyone's hopes and dreams for the future. So this is really an information gathering stage. The why of this process is that we believe that input coming from all Benton communities will result in the best possible plan for the future of this community, one that reflects everybody here. And the how, which is what we'll spend most of our presentation covering, is that we plan to use a combination of activities, meetings, both sort of formal and informal conversations that aim to reach a broad array of people in Benton's community. And in particular, we do hope to reach some communities that have been underrepresented in past planning efforts. So we'll talk a little bit about how we hope to overcome some of the obstacles that people might have encountered before in participating and sort of collecting. So this is an overview of the plan. We'll break it down in the next couple of minutes. So no need to try to gather everything from this slide. There are printed versions if you're in the room. But just sort of a quick overview to say that we plan to do sort of five main outreach strategies that we'll talk about, including public meetings, focus groups, tabling, a survey, and outreach to the local schools. We really hope to cover a lot of different physical locations in town and to also make some of these options available remotely or in a hybrid way so that people have as much opportunity to participate as possible. We do wanna think about eliminating barriers to participation. So for some of these engagement opportunities, there are these stipends available to compensate people for their time. We're hoping to make childcare available for some of the meetings so that won't be an obstacle for parents or caregivers participating. We'll make food available. Sorry, we'll make food available. We're going to work to make translation particularly inter-Indonesian and American Sign Language available for some of the public meetings. We're going to vary the time of day that these events are happening. So we've heard, we've already heard feedback about having this meeting in what is commonly a work in front of a workday for a lot of people in Benton. And not all meetings will be held at the same time or on the same days of the week for the same location. So trying to really create a variety of options. We're going to try to avoid using jargon and acronyms, but if there's ever a word or phrase that we use that is jargon, feel free to point it out to us that has a word jargon. Though we have digital in love options, and also we're working to ensure accessibility so that people with vision impaired and other disabilities can afford to participate. And then on the far right is a list of potential partners. But we wanna note that this is by no means inclusive. And if we, if we left out community groups or other partners, you think we'd be taking advantage of this opportunity to work with. We would love to put that in. So Callie's gonna describe some of our methods.
Could I just interject? And I should have mentioned it before. But we'd like to allow the BCRC to complete their presentation. Then we will turn to the board for questions and comments. And then we'll seek a comment from those who are in attendance. And I should have said, thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Great. So Sam just made sort of an overview of our engagement plan. And again, for those of you who just came in, you have a handout for those in the room if you're interested in looking at that. So delving in just a little bit more detail into, you know, some of the different methods and outreach strategies that Janet talked about. So one of them, of course, we're going to be doing, you know, a series of public meetings that we're thinking will be, you know, deep and do a deep dive into some, you know, specific topic areas. The examples we have here are related to transportation, housing, climate, and energy. That is by no means the final list of topics that we'll be organizing public meetings around. These are just some examples of the types of topics we would do public meetings on. And, you know, we'd be organizing them around, again, themes for, you know, what are some of the most prevalent or most relevant, you know, issues or in slash opportunities of the community in Benton. And as Sam said, we're going to really try to make these public meetings as acceptable, as optimal, they'll be at various times of the day, in hybrid, when possible, and at different locations. You know, we're looking at a number of different venues probably in the downtown area beyond just the location that we're in now. Things that are, you know, already sort of community gathering spaces and are potentially, you know, walkable or accessible via public transit. And as Sam said, we do have a budget for stipends for community participation to compensate people for their time. We'll have food at these meetings, hoping to arrange childcare for some of them, and ASL interpretation as needed. So we're working right now on sort of the cadence of these meetings of when we would schedule them, how Benton will be doing, and sort of what time of day. So focus groups is another methodology that we are looking to do for our engagement plan. Those will basically be smaller facilitated group discussions that, you know, depending on the, you know, community or the partner organization that we work with, you know, may not be advertised to the public as a public meeting, but would be, again, more of a smaller facilitated discussion with a small number of folks representing, you know, a specific community. And again, this list here is, you know, some communities that we are looking to reach out to. And it's not the final defined list of communities that we have selected for focus groups. And sort of our rationale for that is providing, you know, members of these communities sort of a, you know, sort of, you know, private space to, you know, share their, share their opinions, share their concerns outside of perhaps the venue of a public meeting, which not everyone, you know, feels comfortable participating in a public meeting or can for one reason or another. So that's what we're looking at with focus groups. And they have the same sort of methods in place to mitigate the barriers to participation. So these would probably be in a variety of locations in town. They could be hybrid, where possible. We would provide childcare for some if needed, you know, food and stipends. And finally, the one I'm gonna talk about is tabling, which will be, you know, sort of our attempt to, you know, meet people where they are. And this will be, you know, sort of quick engagement where we'll set up a table in a, you know, prominent location in the community. We're hoping to put together a variety of different locations to reach a diverse number of, you know, community members. Again, some of the locations we're looking at, like the bus station on Pleasant Street, the library, the seniors center, major retailers like Walmart, Christ Chopper, basically anywhere that people would let us table. We'd be looking to set something up and, you know, have some sort of quick engagement activities, like a postcard activity, which Sam will get into a little bit more, but we'll have that available at our tables. You can see in the picture on the slide here just showing actually a 3D printed map of the county that we have that is sort of like a puzzle that pieces come apart. And when you put it together, it's our whole county in Benton. It's boxed in there. So we'll probably have something like that that's, you know, sort of tactile and interesting, get people to take a look at Benton and like, anytime where you live in Benton. And it's also just kind of positioned Benton sort of in the context of the region. We might also have some sort of like quick, quick questions, quick, like polling types of things at these tabling events. So that would be, you know, people could just pop up where people are in Benton. Janet's gonna talk about the survey.
Yes, so we'll, we also plan to have a survey available. We know that the community survey in Benton just closed yesterday. And so this, there is a little bit of overlap, but we are hoping to make it distinct from that survey. So once they make their time is useful and valuable, there will be two versions. So people can opt for a really free five-minute version or a slightly longer ten-minute version. And there are a range of questions, but really the core of it we're looking to hear from people is what do you love about Benton? What are the things that you appreciate the most about this community? And what are some things that you want to change about Benton? And specifically, what are, what do you think their priorities are? So trying to ask people to really name their top priorities so that we can start to have a sense of the top issues for people and the direction that the future of dated town plan that we emphasize. And then lastly, we are working on partnering with the SBXU on school outreach. So we have this postcard activity that will be rolling out in the public school of Benton. Sort of in the ideally sort of mid-November, end of this year. And there will be a version for elementary school and then a version for middle and high schools where students can weigh in on what they think the future of Benton should look like in their, in their imagination. So the postcards are being framed as postcards from the future from Benton in 2050. And we'll be asking students to draw or write in what this community in 2050 looks like from their viewpoint. And just a way to, we see this as a way to inform students of this process that's happening in their community and let them know that this is a really brilliant part of town government and civic participation, and also to tap into their potential and their imagination and their potential images of what their community will look like as they grow older. And then the postcards will also be available as some of our other engagement opportunities. Because we also wanna hear from adult community on these questions. And everyone should be able to tap into their imagination and think about the future of their community. This is the sort of rough timeline of how we'll see these events rolling out, which is on the backside of the paper kingdom, if you have one of those. So we anticipate that a survey will be available for the duration of our engagement efforts between mid-November and March of next year. And then the focus groups meetings and tabling will be a little bit more spaced out with a little bit of a pause at the end of the year to acknowledge that the holidays are hard time to schedule things. But as Callie said, we're still, we're still finalizing specific leads for a lot of these events, but the idea is to have kind of an intermittent stream of opportunities for people to participate. And yeah, so just to end again with the overall plan. But that's what we have for you today, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you, thank you very much, all three of you. I wanna ask a procedural question in order to blend with your approach. Would you rather than we discuss in some sort of orderly fashion questions and comments, or are you comfortable with a random approach? I'm referring to the tables and the timeline.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the random approach, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we will organize it.
Yes, all right. Saves us organized, organized too, so. Let's keep it right. So I would like to turn it over to the commission members for questions and comments. I would like to begin. And I couldn't decide whether this was an end of meeting question or a beginning of meeting, but I'm gonna get it right out of the way. We know that the planning commission is gonna be involved through our monthly meetings and specific meetings. But could you describe what you envision as the planning commitment involvement in all of the other particular outreach methods? It would presumably range from, we could all show up at something. None of us could show up at something. Two or three of us could show up at something. Maybe formally in a representative way for the entire commission. So how do you envision us fitting into the outreach meetings?
I think, I'll think, okay, go next. I mean, I think your point of like, maybe some people show up at some meetings feels like an organic sort of way forward. And I just, the example that comes to mind is actually from Bruce. He's not here, but I know that Bruce cares a lot about transportation. And so it would seem fitting for him to show up at a public meeting dedicated to transportation and maybe also engage the community that he's a part of in Benton that's really passionate about that issue. And so I'm sure each of you has similar issues that are near and dear to your heart and why you serve on this mission. So kind of tapping into that expertise that you bring and the relationships that you have in the community around those issues would be really valuable to the process. Anything similar, if you have connections with organizations and specific communities in Benton that you can help bring into the process in a deeper way, that would be really valuable to you.
Yeah, I would only add that, you know, as at your monthly planning commission meetings, you know, it would be helpful to remind folks at, you know, planning commission meetings that this process is ongoing and that there are continuing opportunities for engagement. And, you know, as we schedule things, as we put dates on the calendar for the public meetings, our tabling and where they're going to be, we'll of course be sharing that with you all. And so your help mentioning, you know, as a regular item at your planning commission meetings, and then also just sharing a word with your social circles would be really helpful. And we know, we've already talked with Jonah a little bit about his help in, you know, creating a page on the town website and using social media to, you know, promote these efforts.
And that makes me think that in terms of our conducting regular visits outside of the town plan process, we ought to be mindful and very specific about when a regular planning commission meeting is gonna have a particular town plan update component to it so that that can draw people to our meetings. One other question that I would put to the commission. I see our involvement as the positive component, negative component. You just described the positive component. The negative component would be that we turn these community. The negative component would be that we turn these community opportunities into planning commissions. And I know that that's not intended and that could be done. Uh, accidentally by showing up in force. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious what the members might feel about that level of participation and, and.
And to keep in mind that uh, is the. A forum of planning commissioners, a, a, a quorum of planning commissioners cannot come together and conduct business as a planning commissioner. Without a warrant, public meeting notice.
Yeah, that's right.
And so we don't want more than three of you or anything. Because if that happens, we would have to warn it and post an agenda and take minutes and, you know. Do all the official planning commission as a public meeting, you know, functions because of the other need of. Um, you know. That doesn't mean, I mean, I think that. If, if, if there were, you know, an event like the garlic fest, say, and you were tabling it and. Like four or five of you show up for that, I don't think that would count as long as we are not. Conducting the business of the planning commission.
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, but so it is something that you have to think about and care about.
Yes, and I suppose disguises wouldn't be pertinent.
Uh, so members, uh, I'd like to make a clarification on Ken's thought, so for instance, if uh, there was a. Public, uh, meetings, not hugging, it basically sounds like a warning, one of the, just if, if these guys are being, being leading, there's been noted. At least in the moment, um, and four of you both showed up and you just put this, you know, within the audience listening.
Right.
That's not conductive business. It's kind of if you identify yourself as a planning vision member and you participate as a planning vision member and you talk about yourself. Then that's an issue, but if you just go up to a meeting, you're listening because you, you're really interested in what I think I was saying, you'd like to hear first hand. That's not a problem, just trying to clarify that.
And I just wanna clarify too, when I was talking before about public meetings, that's one of our outreach strategies. And then in sort of like the colloquial sense of a public meeting, not like an official warrant public meeting like we're at today. I meant more like a meeting that is open to the general public. So just for everyone's clarification, that's what I was referring to. When I was talking about the public meeting component of uh, the plan, not. Those would not be official warned public meetings like this, but they would be open to the public generally.
Yes.
And they would be publicized.
Publicized, yes.
Yes.
Why would the answer pass on them? Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Uh, so um, turning back in, in, uh, any feelings that are in support of what has been discussed? Or any concerns that this discussion has left any?
Sure, I just wanted to say that I, I really appreciate the tabling methodology. I think that's really good. I think. It's always nice to give avenues for everyone to come to us, but I think actually going out to everyone really could have seen out, outreach. And I think that's gonna be a really effective strategy and I'm really happy to just get on the line.
I think her, what you said about the tabling, I thought that was very interesting. Um, I also think you might wanna include like the, for a month, the community college here. Um, in the, and um, maybe have a tabling at the bootcamp for. I like the idea of tabling, this is a little informal and short and, you know. You don't have to have a huge attention span if you're doing that or, you know, you just be there and it's great.
Um, well, in terms of catering, also, uh, it's always nice to have an enticement.
Yeah.
On some sort of, whether it's donuts or a bowl of candy or something, it's just. Uh, that always encourages people to grab a bite more.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Um, but on a different note, and I, I really appreciate the fact that. In my memory, we're really making an effort here to reach out to communities that haven't spoken to the past, or who have had them. Had the opportunities to spend time with us and speak with us. Um, that said. What are, what are the plans for including people who generally do talk?
Yeah, I think the hope is that with the public meetings. Even though they're centered around specific themes, we thought those themes around land use transportation, housing, climate energy. Open to, to other initiatives too. Those themes are such broad issues that we know. Uh, I, I would wager to say everyone in, in this community cares about and so um. Everyone would be welcome to those and we hope that people who are, have participated in. Uh, public meetings in Bennington already will, will feel. Welcome and included and to participate in those meetings. Um, and I guess one of the ideas is that. People who are regularly coming to meetings like this one, um, will already get sort of. Prepared and practiced in, in, in the meetings like those. Um, we are hoping that the survey will have a really wide view, should be helpful. Of sort of the general public, people feel comfortable and confident participating in Bennington too. Um, and then the idea with some of the focus groups as well is. That even though they're, they're focused on really specific communities, that by. Reaching out to a wide variety of people, it would still be cross, I think, across and through the Benning population, so that. Um, we don't want to hear just one thing or sort of echoes of the same idea over and over again, that by reaching out to. People of different ages, at different stages of life, different religious or racial background. Um, that. Even though it might be serving communities that haven't necessarily had. Uh, like a direct line to the planning commission before and not like named that way. That it'll still be open to a wide variety of people and um. We, we want everyone to feel like they're welcome, so we don't want it to feel like we're sweeping people because they have participated in the past. Um, it's that. And that's that, yeah.
And we, we had, we, we kind of broadened our discussion uh for ways in particular, and I think that's good. Uh, Ken, do you have any additional uh comments right now following up on the conversation we had?
Well, I think the ladies, when I first came in, I received their, uh, attack. And, and I think we did a great job of those, we covered, I can sit so many of them right there. I think it's a good idea if, I don't wanna say pick and choose, but if. Not everybody goes all meetings, but if you're interested, like I would like to go like to veterans and seniors and schools and. If everybody picks them, they have representation at all meetings, but everybody's invited while we're standing matches, we just sit down and. Take in the gist, but just looking at, at groups of the people they've invited, I, I can't see anybody that is not invited and. Would be of, you know, some of the benefits, you can pay on a great job of its locations. Thinking of, you know, transportation and taking care of the youngsters, segments. They've done a nice job, put us all together, they've got a. Nice commandant here at the times, the dates during the next uh four, five months. For your placement, just to bring a, a job and I think. With our main meeting, we could decide that people who want should show up. You know, so we need to have representation, I think that's important. We don't want them to be my ex-ones. You know, no, we don't want that.
I did have one question in regards to the survey. Uh, what were you guys thinking for distribution channels?
Jonah was just giving me all of his expertise yesterday, he was responsible for rolling out the community survey and did an amazing job. And so um, we're hoping to use some social media channels through the town. Um, also. He advised us to, but a press release with the banner, um. We have started to reach out to some of the organizations on this department, they've offered, agreed to do some promotion for us, that'll help. Reach out to the community, those organizations that are already serving. And I think we'll have some uh paper copies available as well at like our tabling events and, you know, maybe. Upon request to a specific organization, like the, the senior center, for example, wants like fifty copies of the paper survey. Uh, or any other organization, because we realize not everyone is. You know, going online for things or using social media, so uh, we'll have paper copies available as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say encourage maybe a, a Q R code printed out with a link to it, you know, for all of the first events and easy for people to access. Yeah, something good, thank you.
One specific detail I would um offer, and this might sound. Selfish or self-aggrandizing, whatever, but I think that the process. Because this is an official process required by state statute and in the hands of the planning commission in our local government structure. And we will ultimately reporting back to the planning commission with a draft plans from all this uh really important work. Uh, I think that the identity of the planning commission uh should be front and center. Uh, that it doesn't look like no offense, a B C R C effort, uh, or uh some other community organization's effort. This is an official effort of the town uh in the hands of the planning commission, so um, a real nitpicky thing, but I think it's important.
Hi, we're using your colors, so.
Yes, yes, of course. Um, speaking of nitpicky. Uh, I have a number of things, they're, they're not grand shaking, but hopefully very helpful. Uh, and I'm inclined to get it out of the way so that we can then turn to the public. Uh, and, and not have to come back to this. Uh, and sometimes I have to try to remember, why did I write that? Uh, but the first question I have, um, the outreach method, uh, and the focus groups. What is the methodology for identifying the focus group and who is part of a focus? Or is that, you know, and, and you can also answer it by saying, well, that's something we're gonna be working on.
We are. Well, I can also start by saying that um. I think maybe focus groups sound. More like, I don't like, I guess, we don't mean it in like the most rigorous, socialized sense of the word, but.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, we have started to reach out to groups, I mean, in some cases, it's. Like a community where there's, there's a clear and strong community partner who already has a good relationship with. Uh, or, or referring meeting with that specific community, like uh Sunrise, the other research center has. Strong relationships with parents uh of young children and can provide. Childcare and some compensation for the, the parents in their community already. Um, and so sort of tapping into that infrastructure to have a conversation with them about. The broader issues in Bennington seems like an opportunity for us to gather information from them in a way that's. Efficient and not a huge logistical lift for the people that will be talking to them either. Um.
Yeah, I just to, yeah, take you back on what Sam is saying that, you know, as, you know, and you see on your sort of chart matrix here, we've got in that final column, the. List of potential partners, but we're probably not going to directly partner with every single organization on this list and we might partner with some that aren't on this list. But, you know, we started, you know, making some initial like overtures and outreach to. A few of these community groups to see if they would be interested and then if they are, they might already be like, we have, as Sam said. We have like Sunrise has a parent advisory council that needs, uh, that's our U word that comes together, you know. Certain other organizations may also have an existing meeting or like a gay night where people come and, you know, that sort of thing that um. And, you know, we do wanna try as much as possible with the focus groups to work through trusted community organizations. Because, you know, they are the ones who have that direct and trusted relationship with the community, community members they directly serve. Um, and we may not necessarily have that relationship, so um, we're trying to, that's sort of our strategy. For setting up these focus groups and sort of letting them give us the advice on. The best way to bring a group together, whether it's, oh, come to our meeting that already happens monthly. Or, oh, that's a great idea, we know of a handful of like people who are engaged in our programming that will reach out to you to set something up. Um, so that's really what we're, we're working on for the focus groups.
So would another term for focus groups, although maybe this has too much baggage, were stakeholders. Um, uses stakeholders that have a common, commonality source.
Yeah, we don't, as Sam said, we don't mean focus groups in the way that like research-based focus groups, I mean.
Right, we're not, we're not testing a product or, or. We're, what we're, you know, this is part of this phase one effort, which is, you know, focused on. Casting the broadest method we can to get this, you know, input from as many different people in this community as we can. And that's just, um, you know, maybe we should use a different terminology, um, stakeholders perhaps or. Community groups or community groups or something.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we could, we could change that.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, the, the whole focus of this first phase is to cast that really broad net or, you know, um. That, so that we're reaching as many people as we can, including the people that come to your meetings regularly. Um, but also the people that you never see.
Exactly, yes.
So it's just be part of that net casting.
Yes, I, this is not a question to be answered, but it's just a comment. Uh, if we are defining groups. Uh, there are two potential fallouts. Uh, one is that it's a group of like people with like experiences and like concerns. Uh, and on the other side of that, uh, is a group of diverse people. Uh, who don't share, but don't all share the same vision and so on. I don't know how to differentiate that and, and bring it to the table, but I just throw it out. If for no other reason, harking back to uh our, uh, our, our learning session uh of a couple of weeks ago. Uh, where we talked about inclusion, uh, and. One interesting thing about inclusion is it's nice for people with different mindset, different thoughts to hear each other, so I.
Yeah.
I don't wanna overcomplicate this by any means, but it, it, it's just something that, that comes to my mind.
No, I think that, that we, we agree and we see. The potential for, the, for people to have life experiences and also differences around different issues, like for. Um, working parents, for example. Some of that conversation will be about what is, what is it like to be a working parent in Bennington? And maybe they'll have similar experiences and challenges around that, but we wanna open the conversation. To talk about other things too and maybe people in that group have really different perspectives on how they. Found housing or food availability or work availability and. That even within that little microcosm, there could be really different perspectives on other.
Yeah, and I feel like the public meetings, the themed public meetings, again, are an opportunity to try and bring together.
Yes.
Different groups and then, yeah, Sam was, you know, touching on like, if we go back to the example of working parents, for example. They might have the fact that they're working parents in common, but they're not monolith, you know. Just like, you know, if you were to do a focus group of teenagers. You know, they all have in common the fact that they're teenagers, but they are not, again, a monolith, they're all gonna have their different views and opinions. So again, if we have these focus groups and we're specifically working with a specific like community, again, that community. Is united by, you know, certain factors, but they, they're not all going to have the same thoughts and opinions and perspectives. Is united by, you know, certain factors, but they they're not all going to have the same thoughts and opinions and perspectives on things. So there's still gonna be that diversity of viewpoint and thought even within a focus group that, you know. Is what is, again, focus of this specific community, um.
I want to chair or remind fellow commissioners. Um, don't allow me to monologue you too much. Pointing to the topics. Uh I don't wanna steal you out, uh but we'll be fine. Just some of this stuff doesn't require discussion. It's just me, me to make a note of it. Um, in the uh column of uh type of engagement. Um and there there were these topics, I guess you'd call them, the the land use, transportation, the childcare. I would simply note, and this probably isn't all inclusive, uh but our our town plan has typically focused on. Jobs statistically, uh and perhaps the newness of this town plan might. Might say more than just statistics, uh might talk about where we're going uh with our our. Our workforce and and available jobs and such. Uh economic development is is sort of hand in hand with that, so I see that as a potential topic. Uh those are the only two that I jotted down that I was reading this, but am I leaving anything else out in referencing those specifics?
Um I just had one thought in that area as well, and that has to do with bond enforcement. And it's experience with bond enforcement and also from those who.
And I think maybe one, one other essential way to get a pulse on a bunch of topics are important is if you include a survey question that lists out, you know, a lot of sections of the town plan. Have individuals highlight which one seems to be the most important to them. It can help us uh maybe get an eye on something that we didn't think was a certain hot topic that maybe we need to have a public engagement for.
So I now I now know what tabling means. I have no idea. But one specific question, will the tablings be staffed by you? Uh or by the planning commission members? I I assume that that's something that you will be be doing.
Yeah.
I mean, it won't be just a unintended tape.
Maybe we're planning to staff it if you are your volunteer.
I'll get that.
Do you have a thing?
Yes, sure.
We'll recruit you.
Yeah.
We'll also have some conversations with the local office of health here, Benny, the yeah, Benny's office of local health. Um, the mayor, public health specialist, um who is really focused on community engagement. You know, might pitch in on some of those too. So, yeah, we'll be, there was the.
Yes, okay. Uh I'm really pleased that that Jonah is involved in advising here, uh because that. You can either really believe in surveys or not believe in them at all, uh but I think there's one person in the room that. Has a real stance for that whole survey process. I'm not saying that others don't, but I know that Jonah is the support for that. Um, the the where, just a general comment, uh. The comfortness uh of the settings. Uh for the under the penny where, uh you you've mentioned some very uh interesting and important places. Uh and what goes with those is that each one of them has the potential to attract. Different kinds of people. I I know that that's probably what you had in mind, but I I think that that comfort level of being there is important. Um, could I ask something?
Yes, please. Um, also, in terms of the where, in the first call, uh segment that column, when it starts with Black Tooth Shop. Um I would add that elementary schools, very much in terms of that comfort itself.
Yes.
People are coming into their community, their their neighborhood. And where their children go, they know this space, they're comfortable there. I think that's very important place to meet people.
Um, and and on on schools, under the where, um. Can't remember where the this where I wrote it, uh it's further down, but I'll mention it now to the top of my mind. Um, the the list that you provided uh does have a couple of holes in it, uh and I think it's because it focuses on. Um, public schools in the S D S U, but there's there's Sacred Heart is is an obvious. Uh elementary school, uh and I would al- almost mention the Village of North Bank and uh school. But, and this is a good time to note this, we're not talking about the town plan that includes North Bank. Uh because they have their own planning and their own visions, although I think that. Part of the outreach somewhere, uh ought to include the North Bank and Villas Truskeys and the Old Bank and Villas Truskeys. Uh Old Benny, Bennington is more under our umbrella, uh North Bank is not under our umbrella. But it's all planning in the same town, so. Uh uh that that popped into my mind. Oh, also in terms of the where, um. I'm putting my downtown hat on. I I think the downtown provides opportunities for wares. Uh in one concept, and I don't know whether this really works in in this task. Uh but pop-ups um in downtown. Uh we use them for merchandising, sales. Uh we have a vacant space, we set up a pop-up and sell anything and everything. Well, it's a possibility that within the downtown, we could have a pop-up or a series of pop-ups. Uh and sell the town plan.
Yeah.
Or or sell giving the input was for the town plan.
Yeah.
Uh and then the Sacred Heart, um any other private schools um that that might be a part of this, oh, in the home school. Uh so, you know, it's easy to say, oh, let's bring the S D S U public schools into a room. Uh to to talk or maybe smaller breakouts, um but the young school. I'm no expert here, but they're kind of disengaged from that. I know they're not entirely. Uh but it is a way to include those in that outreach.
Maybe through this advisory union because they have to have a, they have to have a program.
That's very true, yeah.
We can check with, yeah, let's not write supervisor union on that.
Yep, thank you. Um, under the who call. Uh. This, this is a little bit funny, but I wrote it down. Um. And 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 there were, actually, I described all of these recommendations or thoughts as. This sounds too negative, but labeled groups, labeled people. Uh and I I guess it's an easy way to talk about, um. Uh BIPOC, refugees, veterans, those are all separate and distinct. Um but then, I I guess, if I'm gonna hold on to the uncomfortable label term. Uh there's probably others, and you would probably agree, um this isn't necessarily a comprehensive thing, and I wouldn't want anybody to think that. That's all the people you're gonna talk to, and why are they getting special treatment? And and so, um that that just crossed my mind. Um.
I'm sorry, I will really quickly also say that, you know, these groups are not always necessarily separate and distinct. You could be. An LGBT plus veteran, for example, or, you know, so you, you know, these groups are not always just in their own box and no crossover, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm continuing down there, um. In in the next group, we talked about people of different income levels, uh and so on and so forth. Uh I didn't know whether the staple. People need specific reference. Uh maybe they don't have access to the media outlets that we're talking about, probably do. Uh so I wasn't sure whether that was a distinct target, it might not be, but. As we access people, keeping in mind accessibility, which is a given, but.
Yeah, and Kelly's already had conversations with Charlie Murphy and Charlie. Right, right, and so we are looking to engage that community of people through uh. Whatever, yeah, community groups, yeah.
Yes.
And to just build some of those best practices around accessibility into. The way that we distribute information about this process and and the way we structure meetings, so it's. Um, definitely, or work with one group.
Yes, and the reality is, accessibility is an important component in our town plan. Uh in terms of goals and and so on and so forth, so they all. Uh moving on to uh the uh barriers of participation. Uh and 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 it's interesting, it's labeled barriers, well, it's eliminating barriers.
Yeah.
Uh but actually, might be nicer to call it consensus. Uh so that the the concept of barriers isn't included in in this, but that's not a really important thing. Uh I would like the planning commission to have the opportunity to discuss the first item, which is stipends. Uh I don't, I don't really understand how that comes. Part of it, I understand the the potential of it, uh and so, um. Maybe, maybe we can, in in conjunction with you, or maybe you you have an explanation you'd like to offer today.
I'm gonna let Kelly address that, and if he's come through a particular program through the Department of Health.
Yeah, so the stipend budget item for this project budget, I think, yeah, the twenty-five hundred dollars. In this project budget for stipends, that is all coming out of B C R C's program budget. Uh we have received um a couple of uh health equity grants. That originate from the Vermont Department of Health, and the explicit components of those grants are stipends. For community engagement, um so that budget uh is, that budget item and that funding is not coming actually. From the M P G or um from the town, at least as we budgeted it, but actually from these program funds that B C R C has. And, you know, basically just a lot of best practice for, you know, engagement, especially. With certain, you know, underrepresented, you know, community members is, you know. Recognizing sort of the value of their lived experience and also just respecting their time as well. Um and, you know, you had used the term incentive, and it it can. Be be thought of as an incentive in a way, um. And, you know, just feel like it's it's important to have that available. Um especially, it it is, I know you said, you know, change the word barrier, but, you know, people. Not everyone is in a financial position to, you know, take time out of their day to. Participate in things, you know, uh because they have multiple jobs or, you know, they are a single parent. Or for whatever reason, uh and so this stipend sort of serves as, you know. An incentive, if you like, um for, you know, those people who don't, aren't necessarily in a position to otherwise. Participate, but, you know, and it just, it recognizes and values their time, and it comes in a very specific format. It's a, it's a visa card. Uh or a check, uh it's a tax, you know, we can, you know, it's, the point is to be flexible. Uh I've been doing some separate programs where we provided stipends. And specifically for like folks who are unhoused and don't have an address for which to mail a check, we did these gift cards.
Okay.
Uh but, you know, we also can, you know, do that. I mean, that's really getting into the weeds of the stipend process. More about the tracking of that and, you know, how we, you know, keep good record-keeping on that, um but. Uh it's just, I think it's just an important part of this process.
Yes.
For the state of equity and, um.
I'm relieved, I I'm relieved that it's you in the state that that will manage that component. But it it's, it's it's a positive and negative, I certainly don't understand that. Does anyone answer that to you or something?
Uh no, slightly different subject. Sure. Um, one thing I was thinking about is as we're going about, I think especially with the tabling exercises, somebody. Walks by a table, sees the town sign on the state town plan. I wonder what the level of familiarity the general community is with the town plan in general. Uh I would say. Uh having either, not end up with the whole town plan, that's a lot of paper, but. Uh perhaps a link to it is easily accessible, so everyone can actually see what the town plan is if they're not familiar with it, I recognize it. These circles are all pretty familiar with the town plan, so I think it's worth making sure that's accessible for the community too.
There there, and there is an introductory component to the plan. Uh and that might serve that purpose or maybe uh refining that would be a good. Way to get that worked out. Uh I have only one other thing. I think, but maybe we'll go over it. It it just the 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 whole partners thing, uh and we've talked about stakeholders, uh you know. Uh I I assume that this is kind of a um. A list in the making, and it may grow or shrink as we build up with the process. Uh it's not a closed list by any means.
Yeah.
I just wanted to talk a bit.
And to emphasize that for anyone watching that, that um if we have next to group. That those are the kind of comments that we we'd be hoping to get from.
And and the idea of these, this partners, is partners in helping us reach as many people in the community as possible.
Yes.
So, um it it turns out that there's a knitting circle. That somebody thinks would be a great way to get some word out to some people who might not otherwise ever. Think about planning commission and town planning issues.
Exactly.
That might be it.
If there is a group that is uh listening now or something after the fact that would want to get ahold of you guys, what would be the best uh way to be able to?
Dan and Jonah, maybe?
We're gonna, we'll have a website.
Yeah.
Comment form, so the folks who. Comment form, they can say, hey, please look at B C R C, no registration party. Um, Michael, could I ask one, maybe one thing, one suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I I I didn't see it, and I know that this is not, like, this is not all of those, but I thought important entities that should be considered to be. Um, yeah, you have to service, I didn't see that on the list. Obviously, they have a tendency to do the most, you know, how challenging. And uh, and that's the understanding of that, and obviously, they will follow, and ask, like, all sorts of people. And that would be, she looks, probably willing to be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Or plus, maybe the uh Young Professional Society too.
Okay, um. Is there anything else on the table page that any of the commissioners would like to make additional comments on?
At this time, actually, it's one little bit, also just occurred to me, um people who provide emergency services. So, that's an interesting perspective.
Uh I'd like to turn to the timeline. Uh I I have only one area of question, but. Others might as well. Um, first of all, um. December seems like a difficult month, and we've had this conversation. Uh so I I I only make that comment, uh I'm not a. Uh a generator or these kinds of things, it's not what I do, it's what you do. Uh but I I wonder how much, how well December elements will fit in. Uh and the other is uh kind of, uh. Well, maybe it's self-defense here, but uh seeing that the first public facing meeting. Uh will be in November. And.
I think I just didn't have a name. Because I have a name.
Yeah. Cause my comment that I wrote down was pretty, uh but uh so that's just a a minor kind of thing. Uh and the, I I just a a bookkeeping thing. I don't want anybody to get the impression that the planning commission is gonna. I don't want anybody to get the impression that the planning commission is gonna meet in in October, November, and then go home. So we're, we're, the whole three boxes get to go all the way through. Uh but the last thing, uh of substance that I had, um the whole school. Uh and and specific communities. Uh but it was the school part that that I was focusing on. So the the block of purple blocks in uh November, December. Uh I just wanna think about, just let's just get that. Uh is it practical for us to involve the schools? Towards the end of the first semester, should that be a second semester effort, and I'm not. I'm not saying one is bad, one is good, but I'm just asking a question, what is the best?
We've talked, Gus, we've been talking with uh school, there's definitely a few, um. And that was like some feedback that towards the end of the year might be nice to have, like the new bit.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've been, we met like eighty months at the supervisory union and. Yeah, and I mean, we haven't sort of worked towards a timeline there. Also, the implementation of the postcard activities is meant to be. Uh at trying to be as efficient as possible so that teachers can roll it out without having to devote. Whole lesson plans around it, so the the plan is to make a really brief video describing. The sort of context of this process, and then the activity, and then teachers can show the video. At their discretion, and yeah, the compensation we have is that it's, it doesn't seem. Uh unreasonable to roll that out sort of between November and the end of the year and. Don't imagine that the activity would take more than like thirty minutes, so hopefully that would be feasible, but. I mean, we're open to the possibility that it could be, it's it's meant to be a little less, so it could be pushed off. Until the next semester.
But it was, this, this, the timeline was suggested by the S V S U.
Yes, well, better than.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh anything else timelines? Well, just the one we're talking about, particularly, segment, um. Inframing questions, uh are you working with the educators themselves? In terms of what is age appropriate?
Yes, we, we've been working mostly with Katie and uh she's been. Katie West is the information officer uh at the supervisory union, uh there might be another. Or is it a job title, but she does sort of information, um. Outreach and communications for the supervisory, so she's been in touch with the superintendent about the initiative and. Um has been providing feedback to us on a script that we're working on. There are two, so one would be for a video that would go to the elementary schools, and then. One would be a video for the middle and high schoolers, and there's some overlap, but we are trying to be mindful of. How we frame it for the different groups and right now, we have a plan to do. A drawing activity for the elementary school and then uh more of a writing, not a writing, but part for the older school.
Yeah, one thing that's a little stuck, when I started this equation, we had um how do you, the the postcard in twenty fifteen? And I'm thinking the ten-year-old.
Yeah.
They have, they have no concept.
Yeah.
How long, how far, and you know.
Yeah, we're fine, and we've, we've dropped that into the script so far, because even like. We've, we're saying this town plan is meant to last eight years, and even eight years for a ten-year-old.
Get out, because you're not really just planning for the next eight years, you're planning for the future. And your plan has to be, be adopted every eight years, but that doesn't mean that you only look at eight years and then be caught off the cliff, you know.
Right, but what about for the child?
So, so we, so the script just refers to the future.
Yes. Uh, anything else in the thing?
Yeah, um I understand that, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of events here that are, you can be planned, so do you have an expectation with your first draft? Schedule when it will be rolled out?
First draft of what?
Uh the schedule of the events, and like where they will be and everything like that.
I don't know if we have planned to put together like a really formal schedule, I think just as we schedule things will, you know.
Different venues and different groups will need to be consulted and will set a lot of dates, and as we set on on those dates. They will be posted, um Jonah will help them get posted, we will keep you apprised that there is upcoming monthly meetings.
So just we have following schedule.
Yeah.
Just confirm.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I would like to set some of the public, like, general public meeting dates. In the next couple of weeks, just so that there's like bar and a now that. People can plan on working, but yeah, like some of the um meetings with really specific. Community partners are a little bit more at the discretion of those groups. Even even with the table things we were talking today about, like having a go hit, so that it is a nice day out. That we can maybe just add, so there's some element of flexibility that we're kind of building.
All right, well, I first of all, I'd like to thank our citizens who are with us tonight, or your patients. Uh and uh your willingness to comfortably participate by listening. To uh the interplay between the commission and our consultants. Uh but uh now, I certainly wanna uh turn to each of you. Uh if you have any specific comments or questions, and the only thing I would ask again for the record, and for people who may be listening at home. Uh please uh state your name uh when we recognize.
Right, I think it would be good for both.
Uh yes, it probably would be, yeah, for the, for the broadcast.
I'm not blind to this, as you know, B C R C had a meeting that could make it this year. And it's just uh dealing with the public health equity toolkit, if you spoke about.
Uh that's a different program.
It's kind of almost, well, it's part of it, but bigger, and this project alliance. Coming a part of this too, our project alliance is, is not a real one organization, but I can, they are a big one, but. And it's almost, we're, we're getting branched quite a bit, know this town plan. And with the planning commission board here, what state standards are we talking about? I'm in the dark on this, I mean, that we govern by Bennington. By state standards for town landing, on how we have to present our towns, or the, or the demand needed by. What's, what's the best word to put it, on that, and um. Quite honestly, with Bennington, they don't wanna engage, so why don't you get them out to vote? Now they're gonna sit there and understand town plan, you've got to give them some education, they're in public, understand, oh, town plan.
Thanks, and and that's, that's really important uh input, uh and I think that we, the the third item is. Is something that we recognize that the huge challenge, this is not our first town plan go-around. Uh but we want this one to be different, uh and that involves community involvement. Uh Dan, could I ask, can you just give a, an overview of? What our relationship is with the state relative to town plan?
Here, someone, Jenny, can you jump in to, she's more into the ultimate plan. Well, the town plan is controlled by state statute, um town plans have, are, require specific elements. Um of which we will develop those, um each, if they can use the added development, the housing element. Um that was a climate element, et cetera, that happened, wasn't there initially, but they keep, uh they keep, uh they develop, it's all a good thing. So we will address all those elements on our town and required by state statute, state statute does start, does dictate how. They adopted, I mean, initially develops and, it's into the slide forward, in in our case, in the slide forward, and adopts, then. Then adopts town plan, becomes, uh becomes a, it becomes a document, of course. Another step, next step is the regional commission also make review and ensure that our town plan, by statute, then they will. Um they will basically accept it and be compliant, so uh that's kind of the formal process. As well, that the process is mostly required elements, and my business coming there, that's a pretty good rough explanation of statute.
Since they have to have one, if you want to have somebody, so um not all towns are required to have a town plan. Um unless they want to have something, and i- if you have a town plan, it helps you get money from the state for various projects. Uh capital improvement, all that nice stuff, um planning projects, uh. Uh but the, there are required elements, but it's still your plan, and the basic. Idea is you wanna hear from your community, what is important here? And you want your plan to reflect what your community thinks is important, and you know, what your community thinks. You should be doing, basically, so you know, there's just a few basic questions that we're asking. As part of this engagement effort, uh Sam, you know, sort of showed them earlier, um what do you love about Bennington? What, you know, what do you wanna see in Jennington in the future, um you know, what could be better about it? And just asking those questions and getting answers from as many people in this community as possible. Is gathering data for, you know, that will be presented in this town plan. And that doesn't really have anything to do with statutory requirements.
So we've, we just asked to allow people to ask their question.
I just wanted to ask one more question in in regards to what's my problem, question, regarding that. How do you plan if you don't have a community that doesn't engage, that doesn't wanna learn, that doesn't wanna ask the questions? The line surveys that are every day, and I I guess you just go with the data that you have, so if you have poor data. How can you plan, and I guess because you're uh governed by the state of Vermont. Uh rules and regulations have applied by that, so how, how can you, I guess you work with what you got. But what I'm looking for in this town is engagement, the more engagement we have, the better off we're gonna be.
Yeah.
And see, I said, that's exactly, exactly what we're looking for too. I think we have uh a great deal of trust in many people in the Bennington community who are engaged. And do have vision, uh and what we wanna do is. To keep back on that segment of the population with those maybe who haven't engaged the subject of vision. And and um that's, all the work that we're doing and talking about tonight are focused on. That concern that you have, and I hope that you can be successful, I also wanted to mention relative to state's action. The state does not create the vision for our town, we create that vision. Uh and it it's uh, you know, there may be some places where. Our vision might conflict with state vision, but it 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 really is our town plan. Our land use and development regulations are based on the town plan. So that's another very important ingredient in our having a town plan, and things like at two fifty. Uh land use development controls uh have a component that involves a community's town plan. So it plays a very important role, but you are actually dead on in challenging us. Uh to try to reach those who haven't been reached in the past, I think.
Thank you.
Others? Yes, Megan?
Nancy White-Pennington, um did you say what the total cost to update the town plan this round is?
Uh we did not, uh I I would turn to Dan, uh we can talk about. The the first base uh planning grant that we received, so I'll go to Janice and help you come up with this.
We did, so all this funded by a district planning grant, so it's not a local one, it's a small match, maybe a couple thousand dollars. Is it a sixteen thousand dollar?
Um, I can't recall, yeah, maybe more like twenty, twenty.
Yeah.
Um so the match would be under two thousand.
Yeah, so it is, the the that period that's part of the part to a municipal planning grant, the state funded covering. And we have already received a grant for phase one, which we discussed, the 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 large part of it is seeding that outreach effort. Phase two, we actually taking all that information uh and and using it to develop our town plan.
What the total cost, are you looking at forty thousand dollars?
Probably forty thousand dollars, the vast majority of it's state planning grant, yeah.
But but that would be the total cost for the whole thing?
Yes, I, Jan, did you think about close?
I mean, the budget for the um phase two was twenty-six.
Yeah, so forty, forty, forty-five, sixty thousand.
Right, so under five thousand matched from the town, the five thousand dollars.
Um, did you hire the person that you were talking about when I was at the meeting in July?
So, I don't think any of us can remember specifics about the meeting in July, but I will tell you that we had, we did a question. All of the, the regional commission responded, and we, after interviewing them, we showed them the two of the project.
Well, I'm just reading back from the minutes, it's, did you move phase one, phase one forward? But you were all talking about a specific person, to, did you want to hire a person or no? I thought you were bringing someone in from the outside to help.
That's the regional commission, uh and they are acting as our consultants, and that isn't a person, it's a team. Uh the the leader of that team, Bill Collins, was here earlier, and these are the people who are hands-on. Assisting us with the development of the plan and the procedure we use to get there. So there, there's no one specific person that was hired from within the community or from outside the community.
I found this was so.
So, yeah, I think what Nancy may be regretting is. June Smith or.
Yeah, anyway.
And um she is part of our team, and she provided a um diversity workshop. Uh for the land nation and some town staff uh last month.
Slide deck for the presentation design, I mean, I don't know if that's an explanation.
Nancy, just to clarify, her company is called, well, it's not, see, you can look her up online, and her, her name is. June Smith, right, I was pretty relevant.
It's Smith, right?
It's very um accomplished individual.
Well, I just couldn't read my, maybe I, I couldn't sign it, I didn't, if you'd hire.
I understand, you can look it up.
And, and you're meeting in August, it's the B C R C. Talked about D E I values they want in the town plan, and you've supported it. You wanted clarifications of recommendations, well, those aren't in the minutes either. And it's critical the public knows, has to understand, what it says at the end is what we all have to work with. So are those recommendations any more to be put on lines, we can read what you've already recommended?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't, put those online, we'll make sure that they are, first, we have the recommendation that the regional commission and the public. Time to name up the, never use a current town plan, issues that we should, all be considered and as we proceed, and we will make sure that goes up on.
Yeah, they're not in the minutes, that's why I said it'd be interesting.
But that's a good point, thank you.
Um, I was glad to hear you might say, this is the B C R C production, because this is about the Bennington. And I think a lot of citizens don't wanna engage anymore because. Of the actions of a lot of plans over the past several years, and and I think everybody's forgotten who the most important stakeholders are. They're the people who live in town, and we have too many groups and organizations and partners. With big plans that block the public from having to say, and I'm very concerned about looking at your list of partners. A lot of these, not with local partners, they spread out further, um so I might hope that. Um, so I I hope the focus is going to be. On Bennington and people who live here. I don't know, you're going to reach out to the junior high high school. When you have kids from multiple towns. Um, because the only people who are going to have to deal with the town plan are those of us who live here. Old Bennington and North Bennington don't follow under the plan, right?
Uh, Old Bennington does to a certain extent, but not not Northern.
Well, in Oklahoma, when they know they have their own town.
They they have separate, that's right.
There is someone left and they are a part of the town, they have a separate planning process, the focus will be on. Will I include all Bennington, although it's clearly off the map that you live within the limits of our town.
And what, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, what, um. Sorry, I'm brain freezing, um. What about businesses, people who have a business in Bennington, are they? I mean, are 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 they invested, interested in what goes on in Bennington?
I I would absolutely.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking you.
Yeah, you have a problem with that.
Just let the students go.
For several years by the time the public finds out about a lot of things. It's a done deal, we've had no say, um. The whole situation with the alliance told the inferiority of Bennington. Lot of other projects that we, the citizens, have been totally shut out of. And over and over, I tell people, why don't you go home and meet it? They say you've been gone for five years, you know what's going on and and you can't get answers, so. I I think for this to be successful, we've really, I don't even know if you're teaching how to lead roads. Um, economic development is number one. We need the private sector jobs in this town. We have too many jobs that are taxpayer raised. Another huge issue that everybody's worried about is. We've got to start talking about prime, Roland just had a opinion. The governor was there and I actually went to the public. Prime, I forget what they talked about, but. I wish rather than having to sign out, everything would be on the town side. I would much rather go and listen to groups that I've never heard from to hear the point. Then hear from the people I hear from all the time. And it makes me concerned when you say the point of closed meetings. The only way you get people together is if everybody came together. I understand some people don't want to speak, but they could do an exercise. I think this town is so broken, broken up into different groups and organizations. The only way we have a chance is if everybody, if you have a talk. And when will the final plan be done?
So this. Stage of our outreach is just through March, um, and then we will deliver. Sort of our summary of of what we've heard from people and some. Like recurring themes that would maybe should guide the next stage of the plan, but the, I don't think that the. Plan itself would be done until like late next year.
Until the eighth of October.
Yes.
So I think there's a lot of potential here. But if you're going to just rule with all of the partners, you're not going to have a petition to pick the public as who's going to participate. Because we've unlocked everything for many percent. So it'll be interesting.
The only thing that I would suggest to all of you who took the time to come tonight. Is to be part of that process. Uh, and if you choose to come to one of our uh focus groups, stakeholder groups, partner groups. Bring people with you. And and uh. We might not be the right inviteers. You might be a good invite.
But I'm asking you, you need to reprogram what you've done for the past ten years. Your stakeholders, partners, the citizens who live in the town of Bennington, most important ones, use their money to pay the town budget. That's what we've lost in this town in Spain. It it's great to have all these groups and organizations. But but we've lost the focus in Bennington, that's your citizens.
Well, help us with that, please.
Well, I I. I would love to if if I could get answers at meetings, but. I spend too much time chasing officials, finding this information and that information, I mean. You've watched all the select board meetings are run, shouldn't be run that way, no censorship. I mean, that's maybe what you could help the public with, start getting us the answers at some board meetings.
Thank you, yes. Anyone else? Well, um, we won't need them, uh, but um.
Can I just, uh, your shout out if you are attending online and they would like to participate, if they raise their hand, you 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 like to know where to speak. Um, and of course, you are required to, if that's something you want to do, just go ahead and raise your hand. Uh, electronically on the screen, it's located in the bottom middle of the window and we'll see if you raise your hand and then you can give the.
Thank you, John.
So I want to make sure that I was clear.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Dave Floyd, and is there anybody out there? Well, uh. Much gratitude and to be continued to V C R C and our consultants. Uh, I I I opened the floor again to us uh to offer any particular comments about. Work today and where we're headed can. Well, I think that it's really important that we have meetings or locations that we get the word out and. I'm not going to, depending on if people like it or not. I think we got Sam here, Chris Wright. And Joey over there, those three, they have big ten thousand followers in the Bennington area. And I think if we give them the information, we don't want their bias, we don't want any of their personal information and they're just. Dates and times of meetings, we let them know, they put it on their site. Just about everyone in Bennington gets the word out, that there's a meeting and here it is, here's the focus group, please come and attend. I think that's the way to get the message out, the newspaper, half the people will get it in town, show radio, show television. Uh, I think this would be the way to go, be. Also, I think we have to go to the people, I'll give an example. I used to represent in college, you know, the mom Anthony recruiting for the kids. All you got to do is set up a table, get a poster or something, follow what you're doing, get a big dish of candy right there. And those kids just keep coming and coming and they want to know what you're doing. And we can put a sign, Bennington residents, and just have questionnaires, and those young kids will come. I don't know the value of going second, third, fourth, fifth, really, I don't. Men's school, high school, I think those kids would give you a lot of information on what they would like to see in this town. Well, I I've really volunteered for Mom Anthony's, I've done it before several times. Put one of you who are experts in, you can sit there and pour a lunchtime, that's what you do it. And the kids can come out and they'll be all over and have a car or a form to fill out. And you get it, as well as seniors dinner and uh you know, all these other places, the veterans home and he's like.
Can I let it respond to one point there, which is uh including small children in this? And to my mind, it isn't necessarily without getting your, I don't know how this would be either. But getting involved early. And if you want to kind of evolve, talking about it, it needs to start. So I think there is value to it.
I agree with you, yeah. I also like to respond to say that I don't want to make sure that all this information goes out on my website and Facebook page and anybody. Wants to leave those statements and repost that information, so there's no need to reach out, I believe. But you don't have to get ahead and reach out.
Anything else?
I agree about the kids, I think, I mean, we used to have like civics and citizenship and it was all about. You know, we'd be coming in, we had the model U N. And the whole school took place and then everybody, each person was a country. So it's very, it's very important to get kids involved because. You you don't want apathy, apathy is death river.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I I know this is a long work, I've been into this, I think that looks great, I think the discussion today was really helpful, so thank you for putting this together.
Well, let that stand as our statement of gratitude. Dan, do you have any other?
Adam, I worry about out of the mouth, I think that is excellent job, I'm glad it's all, I'm really appreciative of what you've done. These folks, I appreciate just taking a lot of effort in this line. And um we're getting more and more of our buddies, we're appreciating them, so we had four staff and three regional commissioners here tonight. If this is the primary consultant, we wouldn't have had one participating, so. I want to say thanks to you guys, we really appreciate the energy and the effort and. It's clear that it's personally important to both, just professionally and both. And I think it would be an honor and it's very, so appreciate it.
Thank you very much, uh, there being no other business. It would be our regular day. Uh, there there's third Thursday.
Also, we may, we may have any to get together more often.
Yeah.
Make sure we get that word out. I imagine as it starts to roll out, we need to make sure that the public, the V C R C.
Thank you, everyone, it's very much, good journey. In a second, lots of seconds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
And we've only just begun. All right, almost, thank you.